First of all, thank you all for coming. We were taking bets on that maybe, you know, if three or four people would brave the rain, if anybody, and we really appreciate this. Four months ago, we had a forum over at Our Lady of Guadalupe. Was anybody at that one? Hey, thanks for coming back, right on. At that one, we had all eight of the people who were originally in that race. And so since then, of course, we, two months later, we had the actual vote. And we have Maran Costa and Rob Saka, who are the finalists, so to speak. And voting starts in just a few weeks. So that's why we decided to have this. By the way, my name is Tracy. I'm Tracy Record, editor of West Seattle Blog. My husband, Patrick Sand, co-publisher is, he's keeping time. And our son Torin is running the camera. So it's kind of a, it's a family business, and everybody's here. So hopefully, you all are pretty much familiar with Maran and Rob already. I have not drafted extensive introductions. I prefer to focus on the things you guys have in common. You're both West Seattleites. You're both parents. You both have worked or do work with the tech industry. Maran is currently campaigning full-time. Rob is a lawyer. And neither has held elected office. This is it. If either of you gets elected, well, one of you is going to be elected, then it'll be off to City Hall. But as for what's different, hopefully, the next hour of questions will reveal that. The questions, almost all of the ones that I'm asking, have been sent in by WSB readers. Largely, it's their verbiage that I'm reading. I added a few things in just because I, you know, have to follow the news so closely that there were just a couple that we didn't get questions on. As opposed to our forum four months ago, we'll be giving everybody one minute to answer the question, which is twice 30 seconds. It's forever. And rather than have the opening statements, we will have closing statements, but not opening, just, we're going to plunge right in. So here we go. First question, this one was suggested by Rose. And Rose wonders, if you could only serve one term and could only do one thing during that one term, what would it be? We're going to start with Rob.
Yeah, one term and one thing. I've been telling people I have two terms, I mean, two terms only, so hold me accountable. But one term and one term only, it would be to actually prioritize and fix the public safety situation. Public safety situation in this city, folks, is totally out of hand. That's my daughter Maeve over here, shout out to her. The stakes have never been higher for our kids across this city, and not just Maeve. And unlike my opponent, who seems to think that the 2020 vote to defund police was a good idea, I know that it was a terrible idea. Not just that, I'm here to hire more police, empower them to effectively carry out their public safety mandate, set and enforce the highest standards of excellence and professionalism in the communities where they operate, and swiftly hold them accountable, just like you would anyone if you don't do your job right. And that doesn't mean, at the same time, we can't and must, won't also must invest in civilian-led responses. It's not either/or, folks. We can and must do both. Thank you.
And Maran?
You know, I have to agree with my opponent here. I think public safety is just top of mind for everyone, so that would be the first thing I would want to address. I will go a step further to provide a plan for how we would fund these things, because we can all say we want to hire more police, we can all say we want to stand up alternative response. But we're heading into a federal, you know, we're heading into a budget deficit in 2025, and $230 million short. So we're going to be making cuts to what we already have, not standing up new departments and hiring more police, unless we raise progressive revenue. And without raising progressive revenue, we just have goals. We don't have a plan, and we don't have a plan to deliver. So the most important thing I would do when I get in is I would want to, and I would ask the mayor to do this now, we first of all need to look at our budget and ask everyone in their departments, bubble up 10 ideas to me of how you can be more efficient in your department, and then we have ideas for progressive revenue that I'm sure we'll talk about throughout.
All right, thank you. I forgot to say that what we're going to do, so it's not like one or the other of you going first each time, is I'm going to do three questions with Rob first, three questions with Maran first, three questions with Rob first. So it's just everybody try to keep track, I'll try to keep track too. So again, Rob will answer this one first. This question was sent in by Ryan, and we're still on the public safety theme, that'll be quite a few questions along public safety. "The tragic death of John Avi Kandula and another recent incident exposed a toxic culture within the Seattle Police Department, especially amongst their union leaders. How will you hold SPD accountable, and how will you stand up to the Seattle Police Officers' Guild and hold them responsible to changing their culture?"
So, great question. I think it's important to note that the number-one thing my opponent just said she will prioritize is raising taxes, not public safety. But on this poor woman who was killed by Seattle police officers, I think, and I'm the only one, to my knowledge, that called out and released a public statement calling out the crass, callousness comments by this officer. Folks, I have, how will I hold them accountable? It's how I've been doing it. I'm the only one in this race who's actually written government policy and helped pass law. And I help, I'm the chief architect of a ballot measure that voters approve to make sure that we have effective civilian oversight of law enforcement, including by having subpoena power. And so I will always, always push for stronger reforms and better culture change in policing. But yes, we still need police. And that officer's comments are incredibly insensitive. We can and must do both. Prioritize accountability and reform and policing.
I'd like to say that we appreciate your enthusiasm, and I heard a boo, and boo to you who booed. But we have a limited amount of time tonight, so please, applause, all of that, please save it for the end. Thank you.
Okay, Maran?
It's a complicated situation that we have here now. We definitely need armed officers in our world. We live in a country that has so many guns on the streets, there is just not a way we can get by without having heavily armed officers. But that does pose significant problems, as we've seen. So part of what we need to do is minimize the number of times that armed officers come in contact with community, that particular homicide, death, you know, the pedestrian, the officer was on his way to a overdose call. We could be sending a medic, and we could preserve our armed officers for the calls where they need to be, where they really need to be. I have just been endorsed by the 911, the Dispatch Guild, very proud of that, the only public safety endorsement that has happened in this race is for me. And they have a great plan to move a significant number of calls to that third department, and then we will have better public safety. I didn't even get to all the stuff I wanted to say.
All right, thank you. I think I am going to ask that as a follow-up question, though, and in 30 seconds, what specifically would you do to hold them accountable and stand up to the police union?
I agree that we need to have, you know, a civilian oversight board. We need to make sure that they are empowered to do what they need to do. And I would want to work with the mayor. I don't think this is one, obviously, one, a thing that one city council is going to do. The council needs to come together as a team with the mayor and hold the police department accountable.
Okay, thank you. I forgot to also say I may, I reserve the right to ask follow-up questions if somebody doesn't fully answer a question. All right, Rob will answer this one first. This one was from Spencer. "Hopefully, you've been keeping tabs on the recent uptick in armed robberies, carjackings, and business break-ins across West Seattle. For example, including countless Kia-Hunday thefts, small store break-ins, the armed ATM robbery in broad daylight at Morgan Junction, and the armed carjacking in Alaska Junction at 8:30 PM." Maran's website says, "We need both police and alternative responses. We can lead with compassion and refuse to tolerate harmful behavior." Rob's website says, "I support policies that will be an effective solution to the crisis of gun violence." So the question from Spencer is, "How do you see your policies and plan of action actually working to reduce reported crime?"
So, great question. It's important to take stock of how we got here in the first place. We have rising gun violence, rising crime, including property crime. And actually, homicides, as of today, and the Seattle Times reported this morning, that homicides are already, already, over last year's year-over-year totals. And my opponent, despite all this, my opponent still thinks that the 2020 vote to defund the police was a good idea. I've knocked on enough doors to know that it was dangerous. We need better. You all deserve better. And so I'm here to work with this mayor to figure out how we're going to get, because of some bad policy decisions, I'm here to work with this mayor to figure out how we're going to fill the gap. We need to hire between 300 and 500 more deployable officers. Yes, that'll allow us to be more proactive, and I want to restore good old-fashioned bike patrols and foot patrols and community-oriented policing, where police learn people's names and business owners' names. We'll get there, folks. Help is on the way.
Maran?
I'm going to have to take a minute to respond to this constant thing that's going to keep coming up until I, you know. And I promise you, you're going to get four mailers in your mailbox from the Trump-supporting PAC that is going to pay for them to send them out on Rob's behalf, and they will all say that Maran wants to defund the police, and that is nonsense. So let's just get that straight right now. There was a vote many, many months ago. It was, at the time, was it correct to defund the police? At the time, 53% of Seattleites wanted that, and the nation was clamoring for it. I think it was a conversation that needed to be have, had. Now, did we have a plan? No. I didn't know that, but they didn't have a plan, and we can see that now. Did we demoralize our officers and lose officers because of it? Yes. So in retrospect, in hindsight, was it a good idea? No. Am I going to defund the police tomorrow? No. It's, I've been consistent the entire time, but you will continue to hear this from my opponent, even though I have looked him in the eyes and said the same thing.
Can I respond?
Okay.
Yeah.
And then she'll have a rebuttal, though, after your response.
Thirty seconds each.
Folks, the only thing that my opponent has been consistent about this whole time is her inconsistency on public safety. We need, we need principled leaders who are consistent on public safety and are going to do the right thing. We can't, we can't have someone who's going to, we can't have another unreliable, unpredictable council member who's going to follow whatever the political winds are going to shift to. I have values and I have principles, consistency, leadership. Leadership requires that we do the right thing, even if it's against some majority.
We definitely need more balance. We need to have a new way. Voters should not have to accept the same failed policies that we have been dealing with on the council. We need a more balanced approach. We need police and alternative response. We can lead with compassion and refuse to tolerate harmful behavior. We have gone too far in one direction, we need to come back to the center. I plan to bring balance, that's what I have always done in my 25 years in my career. We need evidence, not ideology.
Coincidentally, the next question from an anonymous reader is, and I will have Rob answer this one first, given the line of speech that he's been following. "The defund movement and failed vote by city council was more than three years ago. The police budget is now higher than it was in 2019. Yet, law enforcement officials and many politicians and community members continue to blame 'defund,' quote-quote, for staffing and crime issues. How do you plan to move the council, the police force, and the public forward beyond the blame game?"
First off, let me address the most egregious myth I've heard all day now. Trump funding for my campaign, I don't know or control anything going on outside of what I, my own independent campaign, and I'm proud that we have the strongest grassroots, bottom-up-led funding, we're the first to qualify for the Democracy Voucher program, first to reach the cap. We have the most Democracy Vouchers, not only of anyone in this race, but across the whole city, including three incumbents are running. So we have a grassroots, fed, funded campaign. Now, on the, on the police, so again, how did we get here? We got here because of some very failed policy decisions that my opponent supported. And she says today she's, she's against it, but she was for it before she was against it. Check the Carfax, folks, check the receipts at the MLK Candidate Labor Forum. The question was asked, was the 2020 vote to defund the police by 50% a good idea? Was it a mistake or not? I said it was, yes, it was a mistake. She said no. Facts don't lie.
Maran?
Oh. What was the question?
The original question was actually, which Mr. Saka did not answer, is, "The defund movement and failed vote by city council was more than three years ago. The police budget is now higher than it was in 2019. Yet, law enforcement officials and many politicians and community members continue to blame 'defund' for staffing and crime issues. How do you plan to move the council, police force, and the public forward beyond the blame game?"
Right. Okay, so a quick note, the $40,000 you received from the PAC is sponsored by some donors who donate very heavily to Trump. So a lot of what you're going to have to do is going to have to, that is a fact.
I will remove people from this room who cannot act civilly. Is that understood? And I will point out, you should get 30 seconds because a question was put to you, which you did not answer. So I'm going to clear the clock, we're going to start all over, and I don't really want anything but answers to the questions before you. Are we all on the same page?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, start over.
Okay. I think that now is the time, I'm very excited that, met with a new woman, a woman named Amy Smith, she's at the Dispatch Guild. She is the one that's working with the mayor to stand up the third department. I think everyone's ready for this now. We've been waiting for it for a long time. If we can move a significant portion over to the care department, we essentially double our police force overnight. We can hire those people for the care team. It's very difficult to hire officers right now. So we need to be using their time efficiently and make sure we can divert as many calls to this third department. And I think people are finally ready for it. Maybe it's just all of the tumult from 2020 and all the things that we had to go through to get here, but I think, and Amy Smith agrees, now is the time, and we're going to, we're going to get that stood up. Of course, we have to fund it.
Okay. So I think that handles that one question. Now on to, I've got a couple more public safety questions, and now we get just a little bit more specific. This one was from David. David wrote, "Among the many important issues facing the city, public safety rises to the top." I think we've all identified that. "The increased rates of crime, the real and perceived lack of personal and property safety across all geographic and socioeconomic boundaries." And Maran will answer this one first. "What do you, as a candidate, identify as the top public safety issue, and if elected, what will you do to specifically address that issue?"
That is a great question. You know, I'm a mom, and I want to see my kids be able to move around the city safely. I think we all want to be able to move around the city safely. I think the top issue is, you know, like, we need to deal with poverty and fentanyl and solve some of these issues that are driving people to desperate means. This is why catalytic converters are being stolen. And now I know there's juveniles out there that we need to get in line, you know, you see somebody stealing food because they don't have food to eat, and then you see teenagers walking out with beer. And so we know that there's some abuse of this, but we need to really work upstream and address some of these huge issues that are facing our city, or we will not see change. We will still be frustrated. We cannot arrest our way out of this, we can't hire enough police. I'll stop there.
My opponent and I clearly agree that we cannot arrest our way out of this. Couldn't agree more. And we also seem to agree on the imperative to address the root causes of crime, things like poverty, income inequality. We can and must do that. But, but that approach alone, in isolation, is in part why we're here today. See, when we talk about root causes, that's great to prevent crime for tomorrow, but we also need to have effective response and intervention plans and strategies to deal with the realities of the ground, what crime is on, like, we're experiencing crime today. And open public drug use is another important issue that's on people's hearts and on their minds. It's on mine. As a parent, I've been telling people, we shouldn't have to, I shouldn't have, as a dad, I shouldn't have to do American Ninja Warrior when I'm going to enjoy some of these small businesses and hop over people in drug paraphernalia. We can't do better. That's why we supported it and testified in favor of it, Seattle City Council, that ordinance. Thank you.
It's almost as if you've seen these in advance, because that is the next question. And this one, this one was one that we added in. "Since the drug use bill vote is now behind us, do you agree completely with exactly how it turned out? When we interviewed both of you guys most recently, you, you know, there were still some amendments pending, and they hadn't taken a final vote. So now that it's passed us, do you agree completely with how it turned out? And if not, what would you change?" Maran first.
This is kind of a messy bill. I don't think we've done a good job as a city on this bill, really, at all. I was talking with Natalie Walton, actually, from the prosecutor's office. You know, there were a bunch of amendments, there maybe were, they maybe were done in good intent, but we maybe made things overly complicated that may just cause unintended consequences. Officers just being like, I'm trying to read the city code, I'm trying to read the state code, I'm trying to, you know, read the department code, and I'm just going to walk away. That's, that's sort of where we ended up. I also feel like it was quite performative, because if you're someone who wants to put substance use disorder people in jail, I'm sorry, that's not going to happen, because officers are not going to take their time to arrest, and we don't have a place to put people. If you're someone who wants to treat substance use disorder, I'm sorry, that's not going to happen, because we aren't funding the diversion programs or the places where we can put people. So again, we come back to funding. Otherwise, it's just performative.
Yes, so I absolutely support the current version, and I supported the prior version. Natalie Walton, actually, is a friend of mine, I had the pleasure of serving on the Mayor Harrell's Police Chief Search Committee this past summer and fall, we selected the current chief. Yes, I support this, this current bill and its, and its final passage, it is now signed law of the land. And not only that, along the campaign trail, unlike my opponent, who doesn't seem to believe that there is any role whatsoever for police or prosecutors in the open public drug use debate, I do support, I do support aligning existing state law with local Seattle city ordinance. And not only that, along the campaign trail, I led and organized an effort, a signature gathering effort, collected hundreds of signatures. And then I went and testified personally to the Seattle City Council vote in favor of that bill. I supported it now, I also supported it four months ago when it failed. My opponent supported it, or did not support it four months ago, and does not clearly support it now. We can and must do better for folks.
Okay, now on to another topic. Transportation. When we talked to you guys a couple weeks ago, nobody had yet looked at the city's draft transportation plan. So my question is to each one of you, have you looked at it since? And if so, what are your initial thoughts? And Rob, this is you first.
Yeah, I've looked at the city's draft transportation plan, very comprehensive document, so, you know, looked at it at a high level. But even more than looking at a document and words on a page, I've talked to people. I've talked to people. And I've also talked to people on the sound transit plans, including my neighbors in Del Ridge, who are impacted by every last one of those plans, all the, all the current proposals. My neighbors in Del Ridge are impacted, small businesses, knowing that they need to leave and get moved out and pushed away. So, yes, I've reviewed the city's transit plan, and I'm here to make sure that we have a thoughtful, balanced approach to transit that actually reflects community's feedback in all we do.
I am going to be honest, I have not read the plan. I, you asked me that last time, and I thought, I always write down things, I need to do more homework, I'm learning constantly, I can't believe how much I've learned, and I love it. I haven't read the plan. So I'm going to use this time to talk about things that I can actually talk about without BSing you. I'm going to say that we know that we need to build public transportation, because we really need to get people out of individual cars. Our city is growing, it's growing fast, we need to build density, and we need to have transit that will serve people and, so that they can get out of individual cars. Individual cars are, create 60% of our carbon emissions. If we want to meet our climate goals, we need to get people out of individual cars. So I am a huge proponent of public transit. It needs to be accessible, it needs to be convenient, and it needs to be safe. And these are things that we need to prioritize in our transit plan, and I have no doubt that that's pretty much what's in there. So I would love to see free public transit.
Okay, here's a question that's somewhat related, and this one was from a reader who wanted to be anonymous. And this one, we'll also start with Rob. "What are your plans to give voice to non-drivers in conversations around transportation?"
So, as we build and grow and add density, which, yes, we must add density and build and grow, we have an affordability crisis in the city, and part of the path to get there is to build, grow, and add density, and, you know, build as fast as possible. So we need to make sure, as we do that, we take into thoughtful consideration feedback directly from impacted communities, including people who are urbanists, those who don't travel, with the exception of riding public transit, and those who take exclusively bicycles and pedestrians as their modes of travel. They are an important part of this conversation. They are very important. But so are people who drive, and so are delivery trucks, who take cargo from, from, from business to business, and so are delivery trucks who take, who deliver your Amazon delivery packages and your Uber Eats, and we need to listen to all those stakeholders.
The function that I did in Big Tech was actually user experience design, and it's sort of like, you know, designing a city, and talking to the people that are going to be impacted by whatever solution that you're going to come up with, involving them in the design process, and then making sure that when the solution lands on them, it actually does what we all said it was going to do. And if it doesn't, we fix it, or we kill it. And we audit it continuously to make sure that it's doing what it says it's going to do. So in addition to meeting, which I already am, and I know, I'm sure, Rob, you are too, meeting with the community groups, I'm going to take a bike ride with the, you know, Washington Bikes Group, and actually go through Soto and point out some of the dangerous spots. You know, this is how, this is what I did for 25 years, is to get involved in the actual problem, listen to people, and really understand, so that you can deliver solutions that will work.
Thank you. This next one is a bit of a profound question, it struck us, so we're going to allot an extra half, extra half minute, which still won't necessarily be enough, but we'll go for a minute 30 on this one.
This will be one minute, and this is 1:30.
And this one, this is, this one, Rob first, before we go to several questions with Maran first. Yet another anonymous reader wanted to know, "Our tech-based economy brings with it a dramatic change in the nature of work and a tighter concentration of wealth. This makes it harder and harder for a growing number of people in our community to meet the basic necessities of living, such as food and housing. How would you help to address this growing disparity and deep need in our community?"
Yeah, so I'm coming at this from an angle of lived experience, personal experiences, and professional experiences. Recall, at the outset, I mentioned that I'm someone who has overcome the foster care system, and I'm someone who's overcome public housing, and I'm someone who's overcome free and reduced lunch, and, and food banks, and food shelves. I know what it's like to struggle. I know what it's like to go to bed hungry. I know what it's like to wake up one morning and not know where you're going to rest your head at night. But I've also been blessed and fortunate and privileged to be able to work in tech, and work in some of these, these organizations that are contributing to some of the great enormous disparity that we're, we're having and experiencing. So we need to make sure that everyone, my father was a frontline warehouse worker in Kent, and he, he worked his tail off, and he tried his very best to provide opportunities for, for me, growing up. And we need to make sure that more people from disadvantaged backgrounds and communities are able to achieve their true potential in life and thrive. And my path was the military before law school for 10 years. So I know what it's like firsthand. I'm here to drive affordability, in part by driving affordable housing. We need to build and add density, folks. We need to accelerate our, our building of affordable, and investments in affordable housing at the city level, focusing our efforts mostly on the low-income and, and middle workforce housing, if you will, streamline a permitting process, make it easier to build through those things. our permitting process, make it easier to build through those things, and more. We can do better and create more equity for all.
Maureen?
So, again, what I don't hear is a funding source, and this is going to be really, this is what we really need to focus on, is balancing some of the wealth in the city. We have an upside-down tax code in Washington State. I don't know if you've all heard that term. The poorest among us pay the highest percentage of their salary. And so we have people that are paying more than their fair share, and we have people and, you know, big businesses that are paying less than their fair share. So we need to balance that out. The jumpstart tax is one of those taxes that has done a good job bringing some of that money back into our city so that we can fund some of these things that we want to do. We all want more affordable housing. We all want to end homelessness. We all want more, better, more and better public safety. We're going to need to raise revenue. We want to make sure we do that progressively. There are some good suggestions around an additional capital gains tax. So the state passed a capital gains tax at 7%. We could add a couple percentage on top of that. There might be ways that we could tax carbon progressively. There, you know, and if we don't, I can tell you, if my opponent is not going to agree to raise revenue, it's going to show up on your property taxes. And we know that we're all feeling the pain of that. We're all feeling like those property taxes are going up really high. I talked to voters. People are trying to age in place, and they're getting pushed out, and they have to move out because they can't afford the property taxes. So another reason to raise progressive revenue.
Okay, I'm going to move up this question.
Can I respond?
No, actually, throw that in at the end if you have something that you think that was, you know, wrongfully said. The city is facing a budget crunch, as both of you guys have identified, and the mayor is making his proposed budget revisions tomorrow. An op-ed in the Seattle Times by two business organization leaders said that the city needs to spend less, not generate more revenue. So my question is, do you agree with that? And if so, what could we spend less on?
And we are back to 1:45.
Maureen?
We need to do both. So I was at Amazon, as you know. We had a leadership principle. The leadership principles at Amazon are fantastic. One of them is frugality. Every dollar wasted is a dollar not spent on customers. And we lived by that rule. And we made sure. We had processes and audits in place to make sure that we were not wasting money. So we absolutely need to do that. And as I mentioned before, I would love to see everyone in every department bubble up ideas. You're down there way below the mayor, but you know that there's some meeting that you go to every day where people are sitting there getting paid $300 an hour and nothing comes out of that meeting. Or you have a nonprofit that has never delivered on their goals and we're paying them a bunch of money. So bubble up. Yes, we need to get more, you know, efficient with the money that we have, always. But we're not going to find, we're coming up on a $200 million shortfall, and we want to put in place more things. So we're going to need progressive revenue.
Yeah, so I think my opponent and I agree on a lot. I guess our starting point and framework is a little, is where the variance lies. And so we actually both agree on the need to preserve the jumpstart tax. Diving into the details, I don't know where this talk about lack of progressive revenue support is coming from. But we need to, we both agree on that. Also, the need to strongly explore and probably implement a vacancy lot tax. But nonetheless, I read that article and I, at a mayor minimum, do not disagree. I think what we need now more than ever is to make sure, and my starting point is making sure that whatever dollars we do invest, we need to make sure that they're spent wisely. I've talked to thousands of people across the campaign trail over the course of this campaign. Most people wouldn't mind paying more if called upon, but what people do have a problem with is the lack of results that we're seeing. And so I'm here to first and foremost prioritize outcomes and results over blank checks. And then let's have a conversation about additional revenue streams.
Is there a particular agency or part of the budget that you think has a quote blank check?
30 seconds.
We need an across-the-board, all-up, end-to-end review and audit of all of our city spending. Everyone. And we need to put some tight rigor around our spending across all departments and make sure we put, build in performance metrics to make sure that whatever we're spending, we're actually, it's designed towards achieving a specific end. So that's what I support.
Okay, thank you. This one's for Maureen first. This is from Daniel M. He wanted to know, "What is your concrete plan for affordable housing with numbers?"
Oh, wow. That's, that's good. I hope I have a really solid answer to that when I'm actually in the city council. You know, I definitely want to support the King County Regional Housing Authority. It's new. It is two years old. It has had a bumpy start. But I think it's too early to pull the plug. You know, I've dealt with a lot of startups. There's always that question of when is it time to, you know, cut your losses and move on. I think we need to support it and still try to see it through. I have hopeful, I've had hopeful conversations with people in leadership there, that we can succeed in creating the affordable housing and the emergency housing and the affordable housing that we need. Was that the red card or the yellow? I'm sorry. Okay. So that we can increase the amount of housing that we have that's at 30% AMI, so that anyone can afford to live there, and then all levels from there.
So my concrete, specific plan to address affordable housing, talked a little bit about it at a high level earlier, but double-clicking a little bit here. I support Comprehensive Plan Number Five. I'm inclined to support Comprehensive Plan Number Five, and that would add growth and density and taking into account, as we do, build and grow, taking into account neighborhood feedback to make sure we build in a thoughtful, responsible manner that reflects the character of each and maintains the character and integrity of every individual neighborhood. So we need to build. We also need to streamline and improve our permitting process. It is notoriously complex. I've talked to builders and people who want to build, even individuals who want to build ADU units on their lots. Navigating the permitting process here in Seattle is notoriously complex. Houston has a great model. Obviously, not everything that is in place today in Houston, we're not going to be able to port over directly one-to-one, excuse me, over here, but there are, we don't literally need to recreate the wheel. As we grow, we need to implement anti-displacement strategies so that marginalized communities, including seniors, are able to stay in their communities and come back.
Okay. And this one will be Maureen first. This question is from Lisa. "Rent control will likely be on the docket in the upcoming year. A yes vote by the city council will basically create space for the state to reconsider its position and will not actually enact Seattle rent controls with a vote. Still, Lisa wondered, will you consider a yes vote at the city level to push the conversation back to the state?" Basically, would you vote for a city proposal that would at least say that they're in favor of rent control? Obviously, the state needs to make the final decision.
Okay, I see what you're saying. I am in favor of rent control. I think we need to, it's another case where we need to make sure that we are doing it right. We've seen rent control work in some places and fail in some places. We want to make sure that we don't have the unintended consequences of small landlords with, you know, a small number of units end up pulling their supply off the market. So there's ways we can do it. It's not rocket science. We can figure out a way to make sure that we get all of the benefits of ensuring that we don't have predatory landlords who are seriously gouging people on rent. But we also don't penalize smaller renters and smaller landlords who are just trying to do the right thing and keep rents up with the cost of maintaining their units.
So my daughter Maeve is getting a little sleepy, nine-year-old. I'll try to make this not quite as boring as I have been. So the question is on rent control. I do not support rent control at the Seattle City level. Why? Because under state law, it is explicitly, localities and municipalities, including Seattle, are explicitly prohibited, were preempted from enacting and adopting any rent control whatsoever. And so that, what does that mean? Well, it means that any discussion of rent control at the Seattle City Council level is less time and less city resources and less focus that we have to focus on public safety, affordability more broadly, and homelessness. Let's focus on the things we can control. That is a great conversation we need to have, but the Seattle City Council unfortunately is not the appropriate forum. That's the state legislative function. Thank you.
Okay. All right, next question is from Kristen. This one, Rob, you would answer first. Kristen wonders, "The city council will soon be considering a policy around building emission performance standards, which would lay out the timeline for large buildings to transition off fossil fuels. Where do you stand on a timeline for that sort of transition?"
Yeah, timeline for improving, enhancing building efficiency standards and transitioning off fossil fuels. Well, I think we need to be big, bold, and transformative on climate. We need to reduce and cut our greenhouse gases. And as we do that, as we do that, we also need to make sure it's imperative we do that in a thoughtful, balanced manner that takes into account feedback. Feedback from all communities. People, residences, businesses, developers, remodelers, repairs, all of it is important. And so we need to do it as, I don't know what the, I'd be curious to learn more about what the specific timeline and plan is under the current proposal. So I support being big, bold, and aggressive. We also just need to make sure it adequately reflects all feedback, and it's something we just simply can't do overnight.
But how not overnight, would you think? 10 years, 20 years, 30 years?
I would personally first like to find out what's feasible. So if we design a system where everything, for example, uses electricity, all buildings and restaurants and commercial spaces use electricity, as opposed to, you know, natural gas, do we have the electricity infrastructure in place to support that? Maybe we do, maybe we don't, like overnight. I don't know. But there are multiple complex factors and considerations that we need to thoughtfully consider, and that's my approach.
Maureen?
So we have goals laid out for our city to achieve in order to do our best to avoid the worst, most catastrophic effects of climate change. We're currently not meeting them. We're currently all choosing to keep kicking that can down the road, not just as a city, but as a planet. So I think the Building Emissions Performance Standards, say 2040 or 2050, I'm not sure. We have an unprecedented opportunity at this time because we have the Inflation Reduction Act that has hundreds of billions of dollars on the table for cities and states, and it's federal money if we submit the projects that need to be done that involve, you know, preparing for climate change. So we can rebuild our electrical grid. We can get heat pump air conditioning into buildings. We can do a lot of this work that is part of getting the buildings in line, and we can use federal funding.
So if you were picking the year, though?
If I picked the year, it would be 2035. And I know we're not at 2035, but that would be, I think, what we would actually need to do if we really want to avoid the most catastrophic effects of climate change.
Thank you. The next question is the closest thing that will get to a lightning round. I'm not a big fan of lightning rounds or waffle questions or things like that. But this one is going to be a slightly different format. A reader named Paul pointed out that we were likely to spend a lot of time talking about public safety, but that the city is responsible for other areas too. And in fact, the budget of the city is broken down into several other areas. And Paul wondered what each of you thinks about what the most important priority is in each of these areas. So I'm going to name five budget areas, and if you'll say which one is the most important to you. And I think, even though we could do this one of two ways, I'll still, we'll still, we'll go through Rob, all five areas, and then Maureen. So Rob, the first area would be arts, culture, and recreation. Which would be the most important area of that to you?
Recreation, culture, and arts.
Yep. Which would be, which would be the, I mean...
Are those three choices?
No, no, I'm sorry. Under that umbrella, what would be the most important thing? Let's just say, for example, under arts, culture, and recreation, you might say parks.
Oh, okay, thank you. Oh, yes. Absolutely parks. Absolutely parks. I'm here to focus on the basics of what I think a well-functioning city government can and should be delivering for people. It's public safety, public parks, and public works, potholes, if you will.
All right. Health and human services, what's the most important area?
We need to do better a job of connecting our unhoused neighbors with shelter and services.
Neighborhoods and development, what's the most important area?
Building and streamlining our permitting process.
Utilities and transportation.
Not particularly sexy, but transportation and making our transportation network safe so people actually feel free to ride it and adopt it as we build and grow and expand it.
And last but not least, administration.
Administration.
Running the city.
Oh, okay, like centralized services and, yeah. The budget office, super important.
Okay, those are the five areas. So Maureen, same thing, and again, under each of these, this is how apparently, as Paul put it, the city budget is organized, and that's why these various things. So what's the most important to you under arts, culture, and recreation?
If parks fall under that, I would probably agree with Rob, parks. I'm not sure if they do. I do think that arts and culture will play an important part in reviving our downtown. We touched on it briefly, that, you know, we are a tech town. A lot of people won't be coming back to work. The mayor is currently working on a plan to revive downtown. It does involve arts and culture. We need to make downtown a beautiful, wonderful place for people to go and spend money. And I think arts and culture is a big, like, supporting the arts would be a big part of that and culture, you know.
Okay, shorter answers, if you will. Health and human services.
We need to pay social workers a living wage. We are criminally underpaying social workers. The care that they provide and the service that they provide to our city is indispensable, and they could go work at Dick's Drive-In and make more money.
Neighborhoods and development.
I would love to see, we know density is coming. We know we need to do it, and I want to do it right. I want to do it beautifully. It can be done beautifully. And we could have designs from different architects, building, you know, preset designs to make sure that things fit well into the neighborhoods, but we still get the density that we need.
Utilities and transportation.
I would say, first of all, we need to get our buses back on the road. We've had several bus routes canceled here in West Seattle. Drivers are, you know, they're suffering. We're losing drivers. They're, you know, huffing fentanyl along with the people riding the bus. And so we need to, we need to get buses. And buses are our most, you know, rapid way of increasing public transit using the infrastructure that we already have.
They are, but buses fall under Metro, which is the county.
Oh, you're right, sorry. Gosh, I always forget that. Utilities and public transit. Then I would say our electrical grid is going to need to be, we need to focus on our electrical grid and making sure that it is ready to handle what's coming at it.
And last but not least in this one, administration.
Again, we have city workers who are running our city, and they can't afford to live here. They aren't getting paid a living wage. We need to make sure that our city works for the workers that are working for the city, and that's not currently happening.
Okay, thank you. Rob, this is, now we go back to more conventional questions. Rob will answer this one first. This came up a little bit, and something that somebody said a little while earlier, but I didn't jump that question to the front of the queue. However, "The council passes many resolutions about national and international issues. Is that appropriate?"
It is important for the Seattle City Council to take positions on areas of interest and historical significance in this world and in our country that overlap and align with Seattle City values. That, yes. That is important. We just need to make sure we're spending as much time on public safety, public infrastructure, public works, and the like. But yes, we just have to be careful, though, because that's also, it can also be a trap. And we did that in 2020, when the Seattle City Council pledged to defund the police by 50%. And I'll tell you, as a black man growing up in this country, I've experienced And I'll tell you, as a black man growing up in this country, I've experienced police brutality firsthand, which is how I know we need better police. Not no police, better police. And my opponent still thinks that the 2020 vote to defund was a good idea. We need people listening to data and science, not just feelings.
Maren.
I didn't actually hear the question.
Basically, the council passes many resolutions about national and international issues. Is that appropriate?
The council passes many resolutions about national and international?
Yeah. If you watch council meetings, often it comes up that, you know, they're taking a stand on something that's happening in another country, for example.
I see. I think it's appropriate in a case-by-case basis. I think we, you know, municipal policy is often impacted by federal policy, and federal policy is often impacted by municipal policy. Sometimes we have successful policy at the municipal level that bubbles up to become successful policy. So they are intertwined. We can't pretend, and international as well, we can't pretend that we are an island. So I would say, yes, we need to consider the broader, the bigger picture.
Thank you. Maren, you'll be first on this one. Deb asked this question, and this applies to both of you, particularly because you haven't been office holders previously. Please explain your decision-making process.
Great question. I am very data-driven. You don't stay in big tech for as many years as I did and, and not become incredibly evidence and data-driven. So I don't care where an idea comes from, whether it's from the left or the right. It's, bring me the evidence that shows that this will solve the problem. I will do the data dive to find data to say that this is what solves the problem. When we, you know, at Amazon, if you could make a case that this is going to benefit the customer, and it's going to benefit the business, and have data to back that up, it became indisputable. There's less ideology, and then we get ideology from both sides, and we need to move towards a more balanced, rational, common sense, logical decision-making process.
Rob.
So my decision-making process, I have a very curious mindset, I'll say. I don't purport to be the expert on any one thing, but I do have a track record. I served on three government boards and commissions to help select the new Seattle Police Chief, help redraw the King County Council Districts, and review and update the King County Charter. Yeah, this, this will be my first elected office if I win, but no doubt, I've been doing similar work for a long time. Moreover, I've served this country in uniform for 10 years before I stepped foot in this, in a law school classroom. So my, my approach is to listen and learn and center collaborative decision-making, upon which we take feedback directly from impacted communities and making sure that whatever decision we do make is an informed one, not one that's driven by communities where the, the public polling apparently supported defund, but it didn't because in October 2020, the cross-cut poll said Seattle didn't, only 20% of people wanted it. We need to make community-informed decisions, not community, 100% community-driven ones.
Thank you. All right, next one, Maren first. Chris sent this one in, and Chris said, I want them to run on what they actually believe and support, not just what they think will get them elected. So that leads to the question, name one thing that you believe might be unpopular but is something that you believe in, so you're not changing it just to get elected.
You know, I don't have somebody dropping 40 grand into my race or 90 grand into my race that's coming, so my, my positions won't be bought. And I will stand up for what I believe is right and what will be most beneficial for our community and what, like I said, is most likely to be an actual successful solution. And I know that all of this stuff comes down to money. Seattle is a big town with big problems, and they aren't going to be free. And we will need to have tough conversations about either cuts, that nobody wants that either. You know, I know we don't want new taxes. What I want to make sure is that we're not piling taxes on all of you who are already paying enough taxes. We need to make sure that the people that aren't paying their fair share start to pay their fair share.
Yeah, I think my opponent and I definitely agree that the principle, everyone needs to pay their fair share, every last person. And I will fight to do exactly that. We clearly agree on a number of overlapping revenue generating ideas. I mentioned a few of them earlier, maintaining jumpstart tax and, and, you know, the vacancy lot tax, et cetera. But again, my starting point is making sure that whatever dollars we're investing, they're, they're spent wisely and putting some rigor around and, and controls around that, making sure we're always meeting priorities. So we, but we agree on that. I think maybe something potentially unpopular is zoning, my, my views and positions on zoning and density. We've, we're in, we're in the place where we're at today from a lack of affordability standpoint, and in large part due to, due to some failed policy decisions and how we grow. And so we need to catch up. And, you know, I support it, and I mentioned what I supported, but I'm probably the only candidate that'll say this. I recognize that as we grow, we need to do so thoughtfully and preserve the character and feel of every individual neighborhood.
That is another brilliant segue to the next question. District one is made up now of divergent communities. We've got Georgetown, we've got part of downtown, we've got, of course, we've always had South Park, West Seattle. So the question is, what's your specific plan for accessibility to constituents and keeping up with issues in these divergent communities? Maren.
Could you say just the last part again? What's your specific plan?
This is sort of a two-part question. One is what's your specific plan for accessibility to constituents and keeping up with the issues in all these different communities?
Oh, I see. By accessibility to constituents, that means how are we going to remain accessible to constituents? Yeah. I would love to do rolling office hours in every community and change the hours under which they are there so that we can make sure that if you have a nine-to-five job, there's hours available where you can come to a close-by local neighborhood and, and get, have direct contact with me as, as the elected representative. If you work the swing shift, there will be a, you know, a time that works for you even with night shift, you know, whatever. We make sure that I come out to the community, not come to the castle. So I would love to be involved in, directly in the neighborhoods. We can meet in community centers, we can meet in public libraries in the various neighborhoods and be able to hear from as many people as possible. I would also have an open door policy, and I hope to be able to respond to email as, as well as the best of them on the council.
Rob.
Yeah, my approach to accessibility, number one, I would attend, I commit and pledge to attend as many of these community, I'll tell, I'll attend them all. If not personally, send a representative to every last community organization, at least one per year. There's a lot throughout this great community, and, and I've already been in touch with many of them, and already personally attended many of them, from Alki and Georgetown and, and, yeah, the, I've been to a lot already, so we'll continue to do that. I also plan to build out a, if the city council permits, I will build out a field office right here in this district. The exact location TBD, maybe in the junction somewhere, somewhere where people congregate, but where people can go to their problems that they don't have to go to City Hall. I also will be a very responsive person and accountable to you all. What does that mean? If you see me in the grocery store, you see me at the gas station, you see me at the Little League game with my kids, bend my ear, say hello. Tell me your problem, let me help.
All right. And now that it's eight o'clock, that means it's time for, you know, your final words. And we'll go with Rob first. Each of you will have one minute for a closing statement on any topic you want.
Change is needed. Now more than ever in this city. Seattle's actually at a crossroads. We can elect more of the same or a new, better approach that's more collaborative. Everyone deserves to feel safe in their own neighborhoods and their own communities, free of threat of crime or unequal justice by those sworn to protect it. Can't and must protect both. And unlike my opponent, who, where we disagree on open public drug use, disagree on defund, disagree on the need to better clean up our encampments, I know that our city deserves better. We don't need another activist Seattle City Council member. You all deserve better. I'm the only one in this, in this race who has actually written and helped pass government policy and law. I fought to keep our streets safe and help reform our justice system. I will fight for public safety for all. I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Maren, you have the last word.
District one deserves an experienced leader who has the proven ability to build trust, to listen, to champion evidence over ideology, and deliver results. Someone who has not just goals, but plans and plans to, for how to fund those things. That's what I've been doing for 25 years in my career. That's what I hope you've heard from he, me here tonight, and that's what you can expect from me on city council. But ultimately, this campaign is about community, our community, and the amazing unstoppable power we have when we come together to solve problems, big problems that our city has. I'm proud to have the endorsements of all six of our former opponents. I'm also endorsed by the King County Democrats, the Stranger, you know, MLK Labor, dozens of labor unions, dozens of community leaders and other organizations. And I hope to earn your vote in November, and I look forward to serving you on City Hall.
All right, and a big round of applause to everybody here for coming out and for caring.